This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our commissioner meeting of August 22nd, 2024. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. While the comment is designated for discussion only, the public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised. The matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. JR, would you leave some place this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll move into commissioners' report on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. JR, we'll start with you.
I went to the Central Nevada Water Board meeting the other day, last Friday. And they're working on trying to get that water rights buyback program up and going again because they had a lot more water rights offered to them than they could buy. So they're going to try to get it started again. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, JR. Dee?
I did convention and tourism meeting the other night. They're working hard on the Human Speed Power Challenge and the Tucker Program. Things are moving along good. Planning Commission last night, they reapproved a whole bunch of home permits and worked on the land use plan. And yesterday, I toured the lieutenant governor around Austin. That was good, and then make those tomorrow.
Nice, thank you. Mike, did you have any report you wanted to give today?
No, I do not.
Okay. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, commission. So a couple of quick things. We do have the Austin Community Center. We're at about 90% on that design. So that's coming forward. We're hoping to be breaking ground before the snow flies in Austin. For the grants, we have $800,000 that we were awarded for the clinic side and the community center side of that, $638,000 that we're combining them funds to move forward. This kind of fits into the finance update, you know, that Sean did at the last meeting. We have about 4.5 million that's going to come available through our investments this year for moving these projects forward. So we're going to get a lot of these projects out of the ground, but we don't want to start drawing investments and have penalties hit this year. So up until, what is it, January 1st, we're going to be operating kind of on a slow, steady pace to make sure we aren't hurting ourselves by pulling additional funds out of our investments as opposed to using what are coming to... Looking for the right word here.
Maturity?
Yeah, maturing. So when we come to the budget next year, I'll be coming to you guys with a full-blown set of what's coming available, and then we can decide how much of that you guys want to invest into projects and how much of that we want to reinvest. And hopefully we'll have our investors there that can sit and tell us kind of where the market is and when it's a good time to invest and when it's time to hold. Then the Safe Roots to School, we got the 2.8 million, and the sheriff's office got the 563,000 recently awarded for their crime prevention technology. So there are some other funds that we can leverage prior to these other funds coming available. We do have some community improvement projects that we're currently doing, and I would like to, you know, maybe put out there that we can do a workshop with the commissioners on creating themes for different communities and what kind of things we want to move forward with these community improvement projects. Right now, it's just beautification, but when we start creating themes, whether we want to do, you know, rail cars or whether we want to, you know, focus on mining, however you guys would like to do that, I think it'd be good to do a workshop on that and bring the community in and everybody kind of have a say in what we're going to do when we start hitting these themes. And that'll include, you know, street lighting, sidewalks, different things like that that may, you know, better each community.
Is that Kingston too?
You bet. Kingston has its own town board. So my hope is on that is that when this commission does award grant funding to them that we, you know, put a condition on the grant funding that a certain percentage of that funding would go to community improvement projects. That might kind of help spur that along in Kingston, but that falls back on their town board. So we'll have to figure out how to work that one out. For Gilbert Creek, they're going to be spraying that for cheat grass this week. And then later this year, they're going to be reseeding it. Endow is paying for all of that. So I wanted to thank them for being willing to step forward and continue to improve the, you know, some of the ground that we bought up there. And hopefully we can have some great habitat for wildlife up there. What else do we have here? That's all I have for now. Everything else on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Bert.
Okay, what about the youth center money? The insurance in the building? Where are we at with that? Are they going to rebuild that building? What are we going to do there?
Yep, so they sent, the insurance sent over some designs, and we're waiting to hear back from the contractor and the insurance company on what percentage of that, or what the cost and the percentage will be to rebuild that as it was. The idea was to rebuild it as the historic building that it was, with the bell back on top of the whole mine. But that will come back before this commission for approval and, you know, the final pointing of direction on how we want it, what design we want, what the insurance company will pay when we have the facts of what they will pay and what we can build.
Okay, so we need to send the bell off and have it repaired because they broke it when they took it down.
I was unaware of that.
Yeah, when they literally ripped it off, they broke the bell.
Okay. And then I did reach out to Champy. We haven't found a good spot for the property next door of it coming over to the county. So we'll just keep working on that, but try to get...
Finally answered you?
Try to get Champy on board with us. That's a hope.
All right, moving on. So we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there public comment?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Heather Meele. If you guys might know who I am. I just wanted to introduce myself. As UNR's Extension Education Coordinator. So I will be working here and in Humboldt County, bringing programs that the university offers, or Cooperative Extension offers, excuse me, to the community and working with Andrew to continue building the 4H program here. So I look forward to the opportunity, and we have a lot of things in the works and plans. One of the things that, when I interviewed with Bert, he said that the goal is to hopefully bring some more youth programs in. And hearing that and working with Andrew, that's our goal here for Lander County Extension. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out.
Well, welcome and congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda material are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of August 22nd, 2024 consent agenda. Two, approval of June 27th, 2024 meeting minutes. Three, approval of July 11th, 2024 meeting minutes. Four, approval of July 25th, 2024 meeting minutes. Five, approval of August 8th, 2024 meeting minutes. Six, approval of payroll change requests. And it looks like we've got items one and six that we'll need a motion on.
He'll make a motion to approve one and six on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mike. So we're going to jump to item 1.3 just to ensure that we have a quorum. For, yes. Oh, yeah, sorry. So, you know, we'll do payment of bills first. So for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills, we need to pull check number 224945 and check number 211093. Is there a motion to approve the rest?
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the bills.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve check number 211093.
I'll second it.
I abstain.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Mike.
I'll make a motion to approve check number 224945.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I abstain. It's made to my client. Okay, so now we're jumping up to 1.3. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between the High Desert Education Association and Lander County for a period of four years for a portion of the building located at 315 South Humboldt Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, in an amount not to exceed $1 per month, $12 per year, not including utilities. So disclosure is my wife works for High Desert Education, so I will be abstaining from this item. And JR, so you can take over that item.
Okay. We have a motion to approve or disapprove this.
Do we have any? Tim, do you have something you want to say?
I do now.
Okay.
The whole point of renegotiating the lease was the collaboration and partnership with a future agenda item. So that's the whole premise of the amendments.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
For Sparks, I think it's always a good idea to recommend that the disclosure is sufficient with your legal, just to...
Oh, yeah. So legal, was that a sufficient disclosure?
Yes, that was fine.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on it. I didn't include 1.2. They pay utilities and that. So is the county responsible where that? I mean, it's always been a discussion on what about the maintenance? Only on the county or is there a split on...
Commissioner, maybe we could open up the next item as well so we can discuss that. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to open up the next item as well?
Okay, we'll go to 1-4.
1.2.
1.2. Okay, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between the Boys and Girls Club of Elko and Lander County for a period of four years for a portion of the building located on 315 South Humboldt Street and the entire building located at 140 West Third Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, in an amount not to exceed $1 per month or $12 per year, not including the utilities, and to give the Boys and Girls Club permission to remodel, clean, and/or paint the buildings at no cost to the county and be coordinated and approved by the county manager. Boys and Girls Club Agreement PDF.
So I think to your question, Commissioner Chop, is the utilities, we were leaving that between the two entities to work out how they were going to pay that. So we weren't in the middle of how utilities are paid, and they can iron that out. And as long as all the utility bills are paid, the county could be clear of that. And then on the maintenance of the building, we would still do the general maintenance, but we aren't doing the improvements that they're looking to do because they're so, can be so big in costs, really.
We're not held responsible for them?
No.
Or we are?
No, we're held responsible for the general maintenance, just the same things that we're maintaining currently, the heating and air handlers, you know, the basic stuff, but nothing more than that.
Okay, that is all I have.
So the portion of the building that they're not leasing and not remodeling and painting and upgrading will still remain in disrepair?
No, no, the whole building, it's, I think the portion is overlapping with the two entities, but they will be utilizing the full building on both sides.
So you're going to do maintenance, and you're going to do the painting and the upgrades and stuff on your section and Boys Club's doing it on theirs?
No, I think you're confused. The one that they're doing the remodeling on is the one for the Boys and Girls Club, which is at 140 West Third Street.
They're also using the courthouse. They're also using a portion of the building located at 315 South Humboldt.
The main remodeling, correct me if I wrong, is the one at 140 West Third Street.
That's correct, for the childcare. But we also are doing renovations to the courthouse as well. So we'll be painting the downstairs where the old courthouse room is at, what it's called. We're going to be redoing that. So we are going to be redoing that, but they're going to be using that as well. So they'll use those rooms, you know, during school time and then after school, then we would come in. So we're going to share. So yes, we are going to do some renovations. Now, the major cost is, I think, the $700,000 is going into the other building. But we're still putting in money into the courthouse building too, to get it ready to go.
And the High Desert Education uses the entire rest of the building?
They're going to use all of it. We're, every part that we're in, we're going to share with them. Right now, we're going to kind of be at the bottom, and they're going to be at the top, but they're going to come down to the bottom as well.
Three is the old assessor's office and the clerk's offices and all of those.
Correct, we're occupying the upper floor.
And those have already been repainted, remodeled?
No, we've been satisfied with current condition. There was some repair to the roof when the drain was plugged last Labor Day when we had the, when we had those rains, that incredible storm. But that was an exterior cause, and they have been working towards getting that repaired. So we'll be occupying the entire upper floor this year.
I mean, just to clarify, she's going to use it, but the bottom two rooms to the left there, I guess to the left, are really kind of where she stores and keeps the equipment. We're probably not going to be using those. We brought in a contractor, and there's just a lot of work to get that floor back up, you know, it bubbled and that. So, but the rest of it, we'll all be using. But over there, she uses it for your secondhand store and different things like that.
It's actually not a store. It's just where we do our fundraising yard sales four to six times a year. So...
My concern was part of the building is going to be in awesome shape, and the other part is...
Oh, it's not in bad shape.
You know, needs, at least needs a good coat of paint.
And we could always come back and address that and kind of work hand in hand with him if the commission would like to fund some building improvements over there. Work hand in hand with the Boys and Girls Club to bring the whole building up to a certain standard, if that's what the desire is.
But we are currently satisfied with condition. But if there was a desire for the county to do anything ongoing, maintenance-wise interior, we certainly wouldn't object. But it is completely usable and functional.
Okay. I'm good, Brian, thank you.
Can I hear a motion on 1-2?
I motion that we approve, we'll do first, 1.13. We already did 1.31, right? Okay, so I motion, do we have to do them separate?
Yes.
Okay, I motion that we approve the lease agreement for $1 per month, $12 per year, not including utilities, for the High Desert Educational Association.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I abstain for my disclosure earlier.
Right. Okay, now I motion that we approve the lease agreement between the Boys and Girls Club of Elko and Lander County for a period of four years for a portion of the building located at 315 South Humboldt Street and the entire building located at 140 West Third Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, in the amount not to exceed $1 per month, $12 per year, not to include utilities, and to give the Boys and Girls Club permission to remodel, clean, and/or paint buildings at no cost to the county.
So we have a motion. Mike, am I inclined to jump back in here? Yes, okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Mike, for calling in.
Okay, thanks.
We'll see you. All right, so now, here you go. So now we'll move into 1.4. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, creating a policy to enforce background checks for any and all independent contractors and their employees which contract with Lander County.
So commissioners, this came to light with us recently implementing a countywide drug testing policy that we do not even do background checks on any of our... Anyone that comes in and actually runs a facility for us, for example, like the golf course. They're representing Lander County in a building that's owned by Lander County and running a business out of it. We don't do a background check on them. So that's kind of where this came to light, not specifically the golf course. We have an airport contract coming up along with a lot of other things. So I thought that this would be a good time, if any, to put this on and consider it. All of our surrounding counties do do similar things. So here it is for discussion.
Yeah, I know as a business, if you contract to, like, the mines, that's your, you adhere to their policy, right? And I think it probably has to do with liability, right, Mike?
It does. And particularly when we're talking about these independent contractors conducting business on county property. You know, this isn't necessarily a situation where we've got, we're contracting with a contractor, you know, that's working and not having any contact with the public or anything. But when they're actually working and conducting business on county property, that's the focus.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, you guys have any questions on it?
Who's going to pay for it, them or us? The background check? Because it's not cheap to do a background check, especially if you have a lot of employees. I mean, I'm in agreeance with it. I just want to know, we need to stipulate. Are we paying for it as the county or is the employer paying for it?
That could be entirely up to you guys.
Yes, we're writing the policies, so...
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
So, good question. Any other questions? Public, have any comments or questions on the item?
Okay, so I think we probably just need to direct staff to maybe work towards, or DA's office may be creating a policy. And then we can look at it and see if we want to tweak it or add anything, drop anything from it. But I think we just need to start the process. Now, I don't know to what depth, and maybe legal can speak to this, what depth these go into in these other counties as far as if they just are background checking the owners that we're contracting with, or if they're asking for that to be for the employees as well, or to what depth that goes. But if we can get some direction on that, that would help us to...
Absolutely.
Aye, and my initial thought, and we will follow up, but my initial thought is for the company, the primary folks for the company, but also anybody who's going to be onsite. Because it doesn't make sense if, you know, for example, if Bert's my manager at the company, but I'm the one that's actually on the property, I think the concern for the county would be my background and not necessarily Mr. Ramos's. So from that standpoint, I, and we could consider in this agenda item and their employees. And I think that makes a lot of sense. But we will follow up and work with staff in putting something together and bring it back before you.
I was going to say, we could probably check with, like, neighboring counties. I know, like, the mines, like, if you're on the site and they, I mean, you're susceptible to a random. So it's just, I don't know if, I mean, if you have a company that you're subcontracting with and they have 500 employees, does not include all 500, I would agree with Mike. It's whoever on Lander County property performing the task, right? That would be subjected, I would think, to our policy. That would make sense to me.
Does that mean, are you thinking that we should include them in our randoms if they're on property also? Because you said the mine includes them in the randoms.
I mean, if they wanted to do a, like, if they had a reason of suspicion, I don't know the exact how they do it. Random might have been wrong. It could have just been suspicion. If they feel that you're under the influence, they have the right to. Since you're on their property. So anyway, I think it's probably something good to maybe have legal just kind of see how some neighboring counties are doing it and draft it, and we can look at it at that point. Okay, yeah, and that's what we were looking for, some direction on if we wanted to spend any more time. We'll go to all of our neighboring counties and get their policies and how they implement them, bring them back and see what we can come up with.
No other questions? Does public have any questions? Yes.
Arthur Ayden, what would be the standard for their background? I have no DUIs, no, we need to implement. What kind of crime do they, limit them from not working on county property? The entire Lander County Sheriff's Office, we arrested the people that worked on it just about as often as they actually showed up for work. But they were the contractors that showed it. So what level of crime excludes you from working on county property? And I think that would be an essential element to your policy.
Yeah, so I think at this point, that's a good point, Brian, thank you. Is it, I think that's, it's going to be a work in progress, and I think we can take that into considerations. We'll see how some of these other counties are doing it, so...
Right. And if I may, Mike McDonald, District Attorney's Office, for the record. I think it's, I envisioned in those situations, following the similar, the same or something similar as far as the policy that the county employs with its own employees or candidates. So that everybody would be held to a similar standard or at least the similar considerations would be made. So we will include that in the research and policy proposals.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, so I think at this point, we'll just move on as direct, direction to staff, yeah? Okay, so we'll move into 1.5. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the lease agreement between the Frontier Community Coalition and Lander County for a period of four years for the building located at 370 South Mountain Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, in an amount not to exceed $1 per month, $12 per year, not including utilities, and to give Frontier Community Coalition permission to clean and/or paint the building at no cost to the county and to be coordinated and approved by the county manager. Morning.
Good morning.
You want to state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Wendy Nelson. I'm the Executive Director of the Frontier Community Coalition. We serve Humboldt, Lander, Pershing, and Mineral Counties.
Well, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, Frontier Action Agency has been residing in there along with WIC, and they lost their 501(c)(3) recently. We are going to be applying for the grants to pick up the tri-county area so that there is not a lapse for housing and food security and things like that. Our coalition has been around, well, since the 80s, and 2001 is when it came into fruition. But we've done mostly prevention work and mental health. And we do fund, like, the 11th Judicial, we fund JPO about $100,000 a year. So what we're doing is, we're going to be going into a different realm, and we want to utilize that building, and we want to do it in a little bit different way. And the building behind it, the warehouse that you guys have built, that way we can do the food security out of that. Um, and so those are the things that we wanted to uh address with the, with the commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Uh, does the commission have any questions? Comments? The community have any questions or comments for Wendy? Okay. I will hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement between Frontier Community Coalition and Lander County for a period of four years. For the building located on three seventy South Mountain Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh, in the amount not to exceed a dollar per per year, not including.
Dollar per month.
Huh?
Dollar per month.
Oh, twelve dollars per month.
Oh, a dollar per month.
A dollar per month, twelve dollars per year, not including utilities to give Frontier Community Coalition permission to clean and or paint the buildings at no cost to the county and be coordinated and permission to, and approved by the county manager.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, so we'll move into one point six for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the NDOT permit for road closure for the uh World Human Power Speed Challenge held on September eighth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty four on Highway three oh five. Ryan?
Arthur Ayton, for the record, um, I've been asked to bring the request for Human Power Speed Challenge and get Lander County Commissioner's signatures on it.
Okay, Commissioner, you have any questions for Arthur? Okay, does the public have any questions and comments? Okay. I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I motion that we approve the NDOT permit for the road closure of, am I right on that? Yeah, for the World Human Powered Speed Challenge held on September eighth through fourteenth on Highway three oh five.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you are. Can't believe it's already that time of year again.
I know.
Seems like we were just doing it. All right, well, thank you, Arthur.
And one point seven.
And then we'll open up one point seven for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the road closure on Friday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty four for the annual World Human Powered Speed Challenge on Weaver Street from twelve PM to two PM.
What do they use that for practice?
It's a community outreach and they do a thing where they have drag races with the kids in town and show off the bikes and interact with the riders from other countries. And so they get kind of a cultural exchange and conversations and it's just a community outreach thing.
Nice.
Cool. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there any other public comment or questions on it? Okay, we'll hear a second. I'll second it. Okay, so all in favor say.
I don't think we motioned.
What's that?
I don't think we motioned.
Oh, sorry, I thought you made a motion.
No, I just asked a question.
I have a motion.
Okay, um, I motion that we approve the NDOT permit for road closure for the World Powered Human Speed Challenge um to close Weaver Street from twelve PM to two PM on Friday, September thirteenth.
Okay, so we have a motion, but I don't think it includes NDOT right on this one.
No, I got that all. I was reading off two of them. I'm sorry, let me redo it.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead and make a motion without it.
Okay, I motion that we approve the road closure on Friday, September thirteenth for the annual World Human Powered Speed Challenge on Weaver Street from twelve to two PM.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Brian. Or who do I, uh, um, probably just get with Bert. Get with Bert. I don't know who needs it or you give it to the clerk's office, but. Okay, we'll open up one point eight uh for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the county to purchase a bench to install a hole seven at the golf course and to put a memorial plaque in honor of Eric Prowitz, which is donated by the family. Morning.
Good morning, Fisher.
Okay.
Michelle Young for the record. Um, this is specifically exactly what we're asking for. Um, we're asking for the county to purchase one of those vinyl covered benches like what's along the highways. Um, and to place that bench on hole seven because at this point, there is no bench on hole seven. Um, there's not one there. So the family and I have purchased a plaque in memory of Eric to put on that. And we're just asking your permission to purchase the bench and have it installed out there.
Does the commission have any questions regarding that?
No.
Okay, and so have we, have we ever done something like that before where we, the county purchases something in the name of a private individual? I'm just wanting to know if. Not, not that I'm aware of. I know that they have done that through uh some other um, I think you mentioned in tourism did that at one point. Um, Lita may have done that at one point, but the, the county has not. We do have extra benches. It doesn't have a bench there. So providing a bench to go there um is not a problem, but we haven't actually purchased it for individual. Got you. All right, great. Uh, any other questions? Does public have any questions? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the county to purchase a bench to install at hole number seven at the golf course and put a memorial plaque in honor of Eric Prowitz, which is donated by the family.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned a second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you are.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll move into two point one, correspondence reports and future agenda items. What do we have here? Anybody? So I think the, the one thing that maybe you guys could start considering is a time to meet for a uh our community improvements and, and maybe I would like to schedule it as like a workshop, so it gives us a little more freedom for discussion. What uh, okay, so.
This is going to be at the Civic Center or somewhere.
No, we could, we could do it here. We could do it in the meeting room. Um, but it would just be a workshop for the community to come in and, and put their, their two cents on what they think we should use as themes for each of our, each of our communities or different areas within the communities. So we can start targeting some of these uh community improvement projects towards that.
You're aware, right, that Shelby has this gal that's doing beautification, something or another that's supposed to be doing Austin, Battle Mountain and Kingston?
You bet.
Okay, so that's where you're tying all of this in with that, right?
Yep, so they're going to, they're going to be coming and giving us a lot of ideas on uh, you know, that's what they do is they travel around the United States and they, they call it save my community or save your community. Um, so they travel around the United States and they, they give great ideas on improving things or bringing people together for businesses and storefronts. Um, but with all their great ideas, I don't want us to take that and run without some community input.
I concur.
So I, I would like them to drop all their ideas on us, try to bring us together the best we can with, with great projects. And then start putting some themes together that the community actually is, is on board with. Obviously, we never get everybody to buy in, but um if we can have the, at least some meetings to give them an opportunity, I think it'd be great.
Right, is they're going to be doing a meeting with the federal uh Frontier Community Coalition? They're going to be doing a presentation Tuesday at lunch for that. I don't know if you guys got an agenda on that or not. I didn't, but I was on the newsletter thing, so.
Um, so if we're wanting to include the community, are there particular days that we might be interested in doing or hours? What do you guys think? Something like that.
Well, you know, if you're going to include the community, normally these type of meetings have to be done in the evenings because most people work during the day or late afternoon. You can't, if you do an afternoon meeting, you're going to pick up five people, if you're lucky.
Yeah, I don't foresee us picking up a, a big slug of people. Yeah, but I uh, but I'm, but I'm for any time that works for, for this commission and we can, we can do it late evening whenever. Um, and we can do it here, one here and one in Austin maybe, so we can draw both communities and it's a, a short little jump for them. But it uh, you know, these are going to be things that when we put in, they'll be in the communities for a long time. So, so maybe we can spur some of these people to show up a little bit and uh have some input because they're going to get to look at it for quite a while. Yeah. Yeah, so, and then you, like what timeframe are you thinking, Bert? Like, how soon would you like to do something like that? Because what I was thinking is maybe we could put it in our newsletter because it hits a lot of people to say, hey, we'll have to have an idea of when we're going to do it, but to put it in there to advertise people to come. Because I don't know if I'm necessarily doing it after hours because then you're asking people to come in after shift to work and it's just, I, 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 to not necessarily have more people, you know, I don't know. Okay, yeah, I'm, I was thinking that um within the next six weeks, if possible. Um, we, we would like to get some of these projects, you know, you guys set aside that four and a half million dollars for community improvement projects. And we would like to be able to put some of that to work for us and start, start seeing some fruits of that. Um, the sooner we can do that, the, the better for us so we can start lining up uh, you know, any contractors or community help that we can.
We only have one meeting in September because we canceled the twenty sixth, so we could try to tie it in like the nineteenth or something, what do we?
Well, the reason why we canceled it, we're, uh, we're, there are going to be a lot of people gone.
Yeah.
The week of the twenty sixth.
Yeah, but the most, yeah, because we're all going to NACO, but, but uh, and we have a September meeting is the twelfth. Seventeenth, I have PET, eighteenth planning, nineteenth historical society.
So do you, what do you think, maybe possibly the week of the uh, are you thinking like this?
Either the first week or.
Well, first week would be Labor Day week.
Right, okay, like the eighteenth, there's a planning commission meeting here, so we could do it before the planning commission and then, because I would already be here.
That works for the, maybe like on the eighteenth.
Yeah, because that's planning at, at six o'clock and we could do it at like four o'clock or three o'clock or whatever.
Three o'clock, four o'clock, three o'clock.
Yeah, and then I would be here for the planning also.
Yeah, so maybe we can look at that. Is that good with you, JR?
I mean, see, September eighteen through four.
Yeah, I think that would, I don't see why, that would, that would work for me as well. So you want to work, you bet now, you guys want to do it at three, but what times is your?
Planning is at six.
Okay, so would four be too late? I mean, two hour, you think two hours is enough for? I think maybe three. I mean, yeah, because something like that, because it excited a lot of conversation and, and discussion and.
By then, those gals should have their paperwork drawn up so they can make a presentation or at least send a presentation. That gives them plenty of time to.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, September eighteenth, which is a Wednesday. Tend to be three o'clock to whenever, it has to be done before six, so, okay. Yeah, and we, and we'll post this as a special meeting. Okay. Um, it's, you know, we'll get with the, with legal to see how broad we can, we can paint to make sure we can discuss all of it and still cover um what, what we're doing there. All right, and then uh, okay, great. Any others on uh correspondence reports or future agenda items?
We have to approve the thing from the justice courts, don't we? Isn't that on there? Under correspondence?
No, it's just, it's just listed as a correspondence.
Oh, just as, okay, we don't have to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, hearing none, uh, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll do a short one.